All right, we'll call the meeting to order. It is Tuesday, July 13th, 2021. This is the Stoughton City Council meeting. First item of business would be the roll call.
Okay, Caravelo. I know he's there, we just can't hear him. Think you're still muted.
How about now?
There we go, Jill is here.
Here.
Doom.
Here.
Hiley.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Jensen. Jensen, I know you're there.
Yeah, I was muted. Yes, I'm here.
Legaki.
Only here.
Myes.
Present.
Reeves.
Yeah.
Schumacher.
Here.
Tokolski.
Here.
And Vinayus.
Here.
There are 12 Alders present.
All right, thank you very much. Minutes and reports are in the packet. Nobody has signed up to speak at public comment, so we're going to go right into communications. Are there any communications from council members?
I have one. I'd like to thank all the council members that have sent me their council goals for this year. And if anybody else would like to send theirs, that would be great. I will be kind of compiling them between now and our next meeting.
All right, any other communications? Alder Person Legaki.
Just save the date on your calendar. More information coming. Racial Equity Listening Sessions being planned for Thursday evening, July 29th. Targeting 6pm, and just want to make you aware of that date.
Okay, thank you. Any other communications?
Yeah, this is Rachel. Just a reminder that we're looking for community members for the sustainability committee, so to keep sharing the word.
So far, I have four applications, so we're about halfway there.
Wonderful.
Any other communications? I have one. I just wanted to, first of all, congratulate the Fair Board. We had a very successful fair this year, quite a few happy faces down there. And then I also wanted to thank those that partner with us, including the fair, the Chamber of Spots, the Chamber of Commerce and the sponsors for the fireworks. I think most people agree that the fireworks were really good this year, and we're hoping to do similar things going forward. Any other communications? All right, hearing none, we're going to go right into a presentation. Director Weiss has a presentation, an update on the lead service lines. Go ahead, Jill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really wanted to thank everybody too for taking the time and going through this and all of your support with this project. We're probably about 30%, maybe a little bit better than that with completing a project. And just kind of wanted to give some updates as far as the things that we're running into and how the status of the project and how things are growing. So just kind of to bring back, you know, why are we doing this? Why have we committed so much, you know, putting so much effort, resources? And ultimately, there's no level of lead that is considered safe. And throughout time, regulation continues to regulate lead, basically reducing it from being in an environment, you know, significant. Changes really was when they removed lead from gas. So from regular gas to now unleaded, that made a significant change. But there's, you know, being as there is no level of lead considered to be safe. This is another step for us to be able to reduce it out of our environment. And just the impacts are basically, in a child, it affects everything. There's no system really that isn't impacted negatively by lead. So our sources of lead, so just looking at on the, you know, upper left-hand side, you know, that's basically what our system looks like. We are groundwater. We pump actually water out of the groundwater, and then that gets distributed throughout the system. Really, it doesn't pick up lead anyplace except for once it makes contact, which is the first place it can make contact, is in a lead service line. And then the lower right-hand corner kind of then details out where that public and private responsibility kind of starts and stops. You know, we own the water main, the public side service up to that curb stop, which is basically the valve that turns the water off. And then from there, it's all owned by the private property owner. And because of the grant that we got from DNR, we're able to address that private side. So kind of break down as far as what are current numbers, public and private. You know, if you probably over the last year and a half seen varying numbers kind of as we, you know, went through and trued those properties. And I guess the efforts that we've done there is we've done in-home inspections, about 1,400 in-home inspections. We did hydro excavation at the curb stop, sometimes at the water main, to determine the public side, sometimes in the front yards of a property owner to see what's actually on the private side. Other things we've done is looked at lateral carts from previous projects that we've completed and be able to use that information to determine whether there's a lead service or the potential there. The breakdown is we've got public and private, so what we consider to be both. So on the public side and the private side, there's lead, or galvanized steel I should reference, as long as they, for the grant. The private side is eligible if it was ever downstream of lead. So if there was lead, or we knew that there was lead, or believed that there were going to be lead, say on the public side, but now it's been turned over to copper through a CIP project, and it's galvanized, that is rent-eligible as well. So in the situation, again, of public and private, 267 of those, public only, we have 57, private only 388. That really combined as total properties of 712. That is not including the nine properties that we've determined to be not rent-eligible. Those are current, those are commercial properties or have another use that doesn't have a residential use, there is not a school in those properties that are not rent-eligible. So how does that break down? It works out to a total of 324 public lead service line replacements and 655 private lead service line replacements. To get an idea of where that sits compared to where we were at, say, March, when you authorize this project to move forward, on the private side, we had worked with DNR to have 700 properties considered to be private eligible. And on the public side, the declaration of intent included 433 properties. However, we just recently submitted everything to DNR for our loan application, and we used 370 properties because that's closer and more in line with the 324 that we presently know of. So are things breaking out? As of last week Friday, the contractor five-star energy services completed what we considered to be both, public and private, 72. Public only 20, private only 139, total properties of 231. And then the percentages of how that's currently breaking out, we're running about 30%. They are completing about 10 properties a day. So trying to about 10 properties per day, that does not include restoration. Right now, the restoration period is extending out longer than the 14 days. There has been improvements there, and that continues to improve, but I think there's still a lot of opportunity for the contractor to get restoration completed at all property sites within that 14 days. Right now, with the present outlook, basically, we're at 10 weeks. If they're able to continue with an average of 10 service line replacements per day, that'll be 10 weeks. That does not take into account restoration. So that would put us in completion somewhere September, October timeframe, but that would allow them to have enough time to complete all the restoration before final completion, which by the contract is November 15th, or substantial completion by the contract is December 15th. So things are going positively overall. Communication will continue to be our probably greatest challenge. And why I had to let it as a positive thing is because it is improving. Initially, we struggled to put out a lot of information to our customers because, I would say, the five-star energy services were kind of getting their feet under them and getting in their processes. Now that they've got a better, say, process in place moving forward, we're able to communicate more to our customers, to everybody, to the community, and kind of let everybody know what's going on. Again, though, I consider that to be something that will need to be, I guess, something we really take a high focus on because there's just still a lot of opportunities for that to improve. Comments overall that we've heard about five-star energy services are going pleasant, positive, and personable. I don't know if I've ever worked with a, in a project now, most projects that we have don't have the same level of private engagement that this one does, but for the most part, you know, what we're hearing back is very positive feedback. Though the inspector feels the process is going well, and the contractor is good to work with. Fortunately, this is really helping tremendously, is that Five Star Energy Services does have a process in place that is creating efficient replacements. When the project first started, they had one crew working, and we ran into some things, just logistics, and started to kind of question the ability to complete all of the work by the end of the year. They took that first couple of weeks and honed their processes, and they've been moving very, very quickly. Last week Friday, they actually completed 12 replacements. So opportunities, again, communication. There's a lot of opportunities for us to do a better job, I think, with Five Star Energy Services, to be able to help support them, but to get more information out. You know, just for awareness as far as where they're working and exactly what a customer is to expect when they're at Five Star Energy Services in their home. As we get closer to completion, we do anticipate that scheduling will become more and more of a challenge for Five Star. So that also then kind of puts the schedule at risk. And also, we have community patience on this project. In the next 10 weeks or so, there's going to be a number of neighborhoods that are going to be probably pretty over the work that's being done here. So again, just champion everybody for all their support, because if we can continue on as we are so far, we will be able to make it still lead-free in 2021. Another opportunity is, we have a couple of properties where we're having difficulty finding a way to actually gain access. So we're not actually able to notice them, or there's some kind of varying degrees of things going on with those that is concerning. Still optimistic that we will work through those. It's those five properties or so with significant challenges that we'll continue to work on and try to figure out a way to be able to notice them, get authorizations. So that's really all I have for this evening. I don't know if there's any questions?
Jill, it was brought up in finance today that that we're, that we didn't know whether or not you would propose to use some of the kind of pandemic city municipal relief funds to fund those extra commercial properties to make them lead-free. And if we chose to do that, do you have like an estimated cost?
Estimated cost would be about 47,000 dollars. The average replacement on the private side was 5227, with some contingencies built in based on that number. And the nine properties that we have would be about $47,000. I do highlight, I mean, I have been advocating or at least putting information out to at least create the awareness for that project to be considered to be, you know, for the recovery dollars that the city has before them is possibly a way to be able to help support those properties becoming lead-free as well.
And if we were going to go forward, when is your drop dead deadline of when you would need to let the businesses and five-star know that this is going forward?
Believe the businesses, you know, I'm assuming this because I've been careful on, as I explain to those commercial properties, you know, what situation they're in. So I have been careful to imply that there may be, I just continue to tell them that we are looking at opportunities possibly to help support funding, but right now there isn't, and it would come at their cost. I do believe since it is, you know, potentially could be free, I believe that there would be not a lot of notice necessary there. I am concerned on Five Star Energy Services, those nine just created another day, it's just one day, but there's always a lump element that of scheduling and variety of different things that they may have to work around with these businesses being in operation. Let's say from a drop dead date, ideally, we'd have the information by, you know, the middle of September, probably the latest.
So, but they, because they're not covered under the grant, we could do like a contract amendment for those five? And so, I mean, as long as Five Star gets everything else done, they could do those at the end?
Absolutely. We could definitely look at it that way. We could even choose to have a bid separately. There's a variety of different opportunities that we could do if we so chose. So I think you're absolutely right. It could be later than that, for my comfort right now with Five Star, because of the restoration and different things that they have, but we could even amend it, and they could actually complete those next year if that was the desire of the council.
And I just wanted to let you know, two of the Five Star guys were here today doing some videoing of my pipeline. The communication was excellent, and they were, you know, really fun to work with. So, you know, I've heard that from other people in the community that they're getting good communication, so well done in choosing a good, good group.
Awesome. Thank you, Regina. I appreciate hearing that because that's kind of the feedback we've gotten, even in properties where we've had some challenges. I've been very impressed by just the general positive feedback about the people that are working for Five Star, trying to make everything work well.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding lead service lines? All right, thank you very much, Jill.
Thank you.
Okay, it takes us to the consent agenda. Looks like there's four items. I would entertain a motion for the, to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Would anybody like anything from the four items acted on separately? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Next item is ordinance 15 of 2021. This is a second reading from the Plan Commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, this is, as you said, the second reading of ordinance 15 of 2021. And this is an ordinance amending the zoning classification of certain lands within the 51 West Development, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, a motion and a second. Anything you want to add to this one, Alder Person Caravelo?
Same as last meeting, just this is rezoning certain lands from rural holding to a variety of single-family residential SR3, two-family residential TR6, and institutional zoning.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Sheil?
Nope, that was captured well. The institutional lands are public lands, both for stormwater and parks and recreation spaces.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Alders this evening? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? That motion does carry. Next item, ordinance 16, also comes from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is ordinance 16 of 2021, approving a general development plan for certain lands within the 51 West Development, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
A second, okay, thank you. Alder Person Caravelo.
And this is a request by 51 West LLC, also Bob Dvorak, for approval of a general development plan within the 51 West neighborhood.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Sheil?
Yeah, this is utilized for the multifamily sites as well as for the mixed-use commercial sites that are proposed on this layout. The GDP outlines the standards that are applicable to the different districts as part of this ordinance.
All right, any questions or comments from the Alders?
I have one. Rodney, on item number four, are these all the exceptions that they're trying, or to get approved that go against our ordinances, or maybe I'm misreading that? Could you explain what item number four is in the ordinance?
Yeah, those, those are the, those are what you'd classify as exceptions, if you will, related to the traditional district. So the TR6, you'll see where there is the number of units that are utilized, or being able to be put on that, or the minimum rear setback is normally 30 feet. And in this GDP, or this GDP process, it's been evaluated and is appropriate for the 20 foot. So those are the deviations from the standard template zoning within the TR6, the MR24, and then also the, the other lot, the PB lots.
Any follow-up to that, President Hirsch?
Well, I was just wondering, and so Plan Commission has accepted all these deviations, and they've looked at them, and they're acceptable?
It came out of the Plan Commission with a recommendation, yes, as written.
Is it normal to have that many deviations?
Actually, I actually don't think this is a very significant number of deviations as outlined for the different lots here. I think we've seen much greater numbers for some of the other properties that have gone through the plan development process in other locations. But this, this encompasses several parcels in different zoning districts. So you'll see the TR6 district, a specific lot four, lot five, and lot six, whereas in other PD districts, you might have seen it encompass just one particular lot.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Alders?
Mr. Mayor?
Um, go ahead.
I was looking at some of the other information, and the distance between buildings was going to be reduced from, I think, 40 to 20 feet, and a certain amount of right-of-way was reduced. I was just wondering if I could hear the reasons why that was needed.
The applicants submitted their request based on their anticipated site plan. And in the, in the development, they're proposing to have the tighter footprint locations for the multifamily development as outlined in that area. You know, 40 feet between buildings, actually, if you look at a single-family, a standard single-family district, the minimum lot distance between buildings there is, in a new development, is 20 feet. Just to give you some, you know, perspective of distance between buildings. So I don't think it's uncharacteristic of residential districts to have the closer building footprint locations.
There's no safety issue like with, you know, fire trucks or ambulances or anything accessing things?
They still have to meet access requirements for, for the different services. So I'm not aware of any, any additional concerns related to that. The proximity of those buildings doesn't require additional building code considerations because they're not closer than, say, 10 feet to one another. So there isn't those additional construction requirements as well.
And that question did come up at a Plan Commission meeting a couple of meetings ago, and Chief Rip was on there to be able to address that, and he's comfortable with it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? I'm having a hard time seeing everybody on my screen, so if you have your hand up, and I don't recognize you, just speak up, please. All right, seeing no further questions, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion does carry. Next item is R98 of 2021. The next two actually come from Finance earlier this evening, they're both time-sensitive. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, thank you, Mayor. R98, 2021, authorizing the City of Stoughton Director of Finance Comptroller to act on the behalf of the City of Stoughton to accept the 2021 Urban Mass Transit Assistance Operating Grant. So moved.
Second.
There's the second. Okay, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this is one, we've seen the likes of this one before, but this one was a bit delayed, I think, and has now become time-sensitive based on the delays with that. This is to, to get the shared ride taxi program, to get another one of those in place. So we're getting the grant from the state. Did I hack that up a lot, Jamin?
Well, this is just a grant to actually fund the operations of the program. We've, it's just taken forever to get this. The DOT actually sent the agreement out to us on June 24th, which unfortunately was after the last set of financing council meetings. They asked for the signed document by July 9th, so we just didn't have a window to be able to take this to finance and then a subsequent council meeting. That's, that's the sense of urgency right now. I reached out to the DOT and said, is the 13th good enough? And they said yes, but, you know, send it immediately afterwards. So that's why we're taking this same night. But again, it just, it just funds the operations of the actual shared ride program.
And Jamin, can you remind me, was this a five-year contract?
It was. So 2018, I believe, was the first year of the contract.
Okay, so we're, we're on our way through it, and then at some point, the state facilitates the bidding process when it gets to that point. And that's something that typically goes through the Finance Committee. And, you know, there might be some things that we might want to talk about, but certainly, you know, I haven't really heard much news, knock on wood, on the program, which usually means things are going good. I usually only hear when things aren't going so good down there. But it seems like, you know, we have a nice fleet of vehicles, thanks to a lot of work that Jamin has done, and the council and finances approved. We have all vehicles with bands with lift gates, which is a far improvement, although the Crown Vics will be missed down there. These vehicles will, will serve the community very well, especially those that, you know, have disability issues. So we're happy to have them, and it's been a good program for the city for many years. Anybody have any questions or comments on it?
I do. This is Rachel.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is the amount of 206,000 for only 2021?
Yes.
And that's, let's see here, to help cover the city expects 170,000 of that cost to be recovered. Okay, and then so the 206,000 is just for 2021, for what's not covered by the fair revenues?
That's correct. So the program itself, for all intents and purposes, ends up $0 out of pocket for the city. Everything's either covered through the ridership fairs or the grant.
Okay. And what's the, do we know, like, the average fare amount to get from one side of town to the other?
I think it's, and there's some age requirements, but I want to say it's maybe $3, $2, something like that. It's just based on the actual ride, not the actual mileage.
It's
And there's some, there's some senior discounts and student discounts.
And they also have a punch card program that they utilize.
But without any discount, it's $2 to $3 across town, you think?
That, that's correct.
Thanks.
And then some of the businesses help sponsor rides through programs like Start. And then some of the businesses help sponsor rides through programs like Start, which has been really good for those that are in need, that have trouble, you know, covering the cost to go to one side of town to the other to get groceries or whatever. So it really has been a nice program. And I know when I go out and talk to people, that's one of the things that, you know, obviously they like it to be free, but this is a pretty good deal. We get a lot of rides for, for this money here and, and they continue to accommodate us as best as they can. And it is a shared ride program. So, you know, once in a while, we'll get a call where somebody was running late. But, you know, if there's, if they're underway somewhere and somebody else calls in, they're going to stop, pick up the next person. So, you know, it's not always a hundred percent on time, but they do the best that they can. And if you have or receive any feedback, you can feel free to send them either my way or Jamin's way. We, we have pretty good communication with the management team down there.
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I, I just looked up the race real quick. So it's four fifty one-way and then the senior discount is three fifty one-way.
That's anywhere in town?
That's correct. And I believe their range is actually three miles outside of town as well.
Can people use it to go to Madison for work or anything?
That is not currently an option.
There are some other options, but, you know, it's through more Dane County Rideshare type programs, which certainly are available, but they're maybe not as convenient for everybody, but they are available. And then there also is some RSVP programs and affordable trans- transportation programs. And those are really designed for more of the seniors trying to get the, like, healthcare appointments and things like that.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item also comes from Finance, all the person Schumacher.
All right, R ninety-nine, twenty twenty-one, resolution authorizing proper city official to enter into a master advisory services agreement and related statement of work with Baker Tilly for services related to administering the fiscal recovery funds received as part of the American Rescue Plan. So moved.
And second, okay, all the person Schumacher.
All right, just as that one states, it is Baker Tilly will undertake looking at what are our lost revenues and a few other things that could be related to the funds available from the American Rescue Plan. We've got it set as a, as a twenty thousand dollar maximum to put together this report. And they will, it's, it's not going to be fully twenty thousand dollars. It'll be whatever, whatever amount of work they do not to exceed twenty thousand dollars. That's about it. Other than that, this is another one that has to go quickly because of deadlines related to reporting and such.
All right, anything you want to add to that one, Director Friedel?
No, that about summed it up. Really, the rush behind this is, is to get them moving on the, the lost revenue calculation. We could certainly wait two weeks if anybody feels that's necessary. But the sooner we can get them moving on this, the sooner we'll get that number. And then the sooner you folks will be able to start cranking out some programs and have another meeting related to this, this program.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion does carry. Next item, looks like this one came through Finance as well. All the person Schumacher.
All right, R one hundred of twenty twenty-one, resolution approving the use of the second lease extension template for the tenants remaining at the senior center annex. So moved.
Second.
And there's a second, all the person Schumacher.
All right, these were some generalized lease templates that we used in place of the individual agreements. There are two, two tenants left of the four that were in the senior center annex. And these would extend their lease agreement from October first of twenty twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-two, or any time that they choose to notify us of termination. And I think that is it.
Anything you want to add, Director Friedel?
Yeah, this, this is pretty similar to the initial extension that was passed earlier this year, I think it was. Or I guess it was fall that it was passed. This is really just referring to the existing agreements. So all terms and conditions, with the exception of the termination date, will stay the same as the existing agreements. As Alder Schumacher stated, there's only two, two tenants at this point in time. Two of the, two of the other tenants have, have now moved out.
I would add that I, I visited both tenants or I ran into them. One where, well, I visited one, ran into the other one and they, they all seem really happy with the new locations. Two of them relocated out at Silverado. And then the, the hairstylist is next to the chiropractic clinic. So I think they, they all chose excellent locations for their businesses and they seem to be doing well. Any questions or comments from Alders? All the person Lagaki.
I just a question. If they were to end their lease early, it is stated that it says in the original lease agreements. Just wanting to confirm that there's no penalties or anything like that, that they have the right to end early with no penalty at all. Is that correct?
That's correct. The original agreement states sixty days notice. Obviously, the city is going to work with them. If they find a space and are crunch for time, we're not going to apply any penalties to these. But there is, there, there is an out in the original agreement with that sixty day notice. If they give us thirty days or even two weeks, we're not going to go after them and penalize them.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. This one here also comes from Finance, all the person Schumacher.
R one oh one of twenty twenty-one, resolution authorizing the proper city official to reduce the letter of credit on file for GIP Glacier Marine LLC by eighty-five thousand dollars. So moved.
Second.
Second.
And there's the second, all the person Schumacher.
This one I would like to have Director Friedel go over because there's a few subtleties that are in this one that I want to, to make clear.
Okay, so this was an agreement out in TIFF number six with GIP Glacier Marine, also known as GrowSo. So I think we've been through this almost a year ago and I was kind of at the beginning of the pandemic that we closed on this property. TIFF six is also where NAFA is and we tried to design the agreement with GIP Glacier Marine to provide some sort of security to the city and actually have it secured, not just have it on paper. So at the end of the day, we, we, we looked at, at kind of what value needed to be recovered through actual property tax increment. And that number came out to be five hundred and fifty thousand dollars over the life of the, the remaining life of the TIFF district. So GrowSo has put up a line of credit or a letter of credit to us for five hundred and fifty thousand dollars with the understanding that every year around mid-December, we would look at it, look at the value they put in, apply the mill rate and then say, okay, now we can reduce your letter of credit by this amount. The GrowSo has approached me a couple of months ago, actually a number of months ago, and asked, is there any way we could reduce this a little bit earlier than waiting for December? Couple of things had to happen on the tax side of things. We had to get the actual assessed value, things like that. Now the border review has closed, we have that number. We were able to kind of calculate out and forecast out what the remaining increment is going to be for this, this overall project. And that number actually calculates out right now, all things staying the same in terms of mill rate. That's kind of the last piece of the puzzle that we're missing. And that's why we, we stated in the agreement, we're going to wait until December to do this. So that's the last piece missing is the, is the mill rate. So all things remaining equal, including the, the, the mill rate, the reduction would calculate out to about a hundred and five thousand dollars. Now, we would have to have a drastic reduction in the mill rate, almost an unheard of reduction in the mill rate for us to give them eighty-five thousand dollars back on the letter of credit and find out we gave them too much. So when the Finance Committee met a few weeks ago, they basically put kind of a twenty percent contingency on it, give or take, and said, okay, we'll, we'll give them eighty-five thousand dollars now. And then in December, when we get the final mill rate calculated, then we'll kind of go back and true up and reduce their letter of credit probably by about that twenty thousand dollar mark. So that's kind of the ins and outs of the agreements. Again, it's, it's GrowSo just asking us to do this earlier. Obviously, that's at the discretion of the council. The agreement does say we can wait until mid-December so that, that's certainly, if that's your priority, you can certainly do that. But again, I, I, I think this is a safe amount. Like I said, it calculates out to about a hundred and five thousand dollars. I think eighty-five thousand dollars is a pretty safe amount at this point in time. And this, this agreement's in place for the next four years. This, but this agreement will go until mid-December twenty twenty-four. So we have a number, a couple more cracks at this too. And I know that, like Alder Schumacher said, there's kind of a lot of moving parts to this and ins and outs and some forecasting. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has as well.
And, and Jamin, when you were explaining this to Finance, you're saying that this actually really helps the company, it kind of frees up some cash for them to continue building. Because I think they're, they have to build a number of sites in the next couple of years. So this actually helps them achieve their goal for us to meet the tax increment that we're looking for.
That would be based on some assumptions that the money they actually get back is going to go back into the project. Now, they're actively working out there. They are putting out buildings. What this does is it frees up some money for them to continue pursuing projects. I can't say one way or the other if they're putting it back into the TIFF six project or not. But they know that they have to meet a certain amount of revenue for us over the next couple of years to get their entire letter of credit back. And again, it's an obligation we have right now. It just can't be fully calculated until December. So it's not like we're giving them something and doing them a favor. We kind of be doing them a favor by giving it to them a little bit earlier. But it's either now or it's, it's mid-December when we pay this money or when we release this amount on their letter of credit. But it, it does benefit the developer. But again, whether or not it's going a hundred percent back into the TIFF six project or not, I can't say that for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is coming from C A C P, all the person highly.
So this is Resolution one oh two of twenty-one, repealing council policy regarding attending city meetings via remote access and adopting council rule regarding virtual meeting attendance. So our previous standing rule for virtual meetings before the pandemic was that there weren't any. We were operating under a temporary rule now that allows us to have this virtual meeting for the past year and a half. And now we're encoding it in council rules that we can go ahead with virtual access for both members of council and committees and for the general public into the future. Could the mayor or city staff give us an overview of the, we, we were going to use Zoom in the council chambers, correct?
Yeah, the, the testing that we've done so far showed that Zoom is compatible to the equipment and WSTO. The go-to meeting platform is not. So when we do city council or Plan Commission or any other televised meetings, we really need to use a Zoom. So if, if we decide to go forward with the hybrid option, we would transition to that upon the approval of, of this policy. And it, it's actually pretty simple. If you're calling in on a Zoom or even the phone number, you would just go as normal. If you're in the council chambers, there's really no reason to zoom in because the host will be zoomed in with their microphone muted. And then we're going to share their screen with the TVs. So then everybody in the room will be able to see the people that are on the Zoom call. And the people on the Zoom call will be able to see the shared TV screen. And then all the sound and, and we'll go through the microphones and come out to speakers in the room. So it works quite well. The committees will be a little bit trickier. You can use any platform for that because we're not using the WSTO equipment. But we have to make sure that whoever is hosting the meeting, there's a couple of speakers that we tested up there to plug into the desktop or perhaps a laptop that we could use. And then there's different stations up there for the HDMI one, HDMI two, or HDMI three. So, you know, certainly, we have to make sure that the TVs are synced up with whichever cable we plug into the host device up there. But that's pretty easy to do. So we're confident that it's going to work. As far as the policies, I guess I would, if you want Attorney Dragney to run through that, you certainly could.
Be helpful.
Okay, I'm here. Hello, everyone. So let me provide just a little context. The technically, there, there are really a couple of things that are going on in this policy that are important. First, under paragraph B, that, that is a key, a key provision because that's what actually states that members and the public may attend meetings of the common council or of any city committee, board, or commission in person or by virtual means. So if this is adopted, then that in fact will be the policy of the City of Stoughton. The remaining provisions of this policy are designed to deal with the more technical and procedural aspects of conducting virtual meetings or hybrid meetings where you have some people in person and some people appearing virtually. So paragraph C does require the council to designate the internet meeting service that will be used for these meetings. And we've just heard from Mayor Swadley that Zoom is likely to be the service that will be used. Paragraph D speaks to the procedure and the time associated with logging in to meetings requires that the clerk make a meeting service available at least fifteen minutes before the start of a meeting and admit users in as a, you know, beginning fifteen minutes before the meeting. It also does require members to identify themselves as required to sign in when appearing by the virtual service and to maintain internet and audio access throughout the meeting whenever present. Paragraph E addresses the question of how a quorum may be or will be determined during a meeting where it's a hybrid meeting or a virtual meeting. Be an audible roll call at the beginning. Once that roll call has been conducted, members attending virtually shall be deemed to be present for quorum purposes so long as they've signed into the meeting. Um, uh, the presence of a, of a quorum can be, uh, redetermined later in the meeting if, uh, demanded by any particular, any member during the meeting. Uh, and, uh, following votes that are taken where the number of votes, uh, don't add up to the quorum required for a meeting. Paragraph F speaks to the fact that each member is responsible for the members' own audio, video, and internet connections. That's not going to be a city responsibility, but, uh, the responsibility of individual members who choose to appear virtually. Uh, this also requires that members remain connected to a meeting by both audio and video mea, meetings. That means during meeting, except where muting is necessary to avoid a disruption. If, if there is a loss of a connection or poor quality of, of connection during a meeting, um, uh, the rule makes it clear that action taken by the council under those circumstances would still be a valid action. Um, paragraph G speaks to forced disconnections and does give the presiding officer the authority to uh, mute someone or disconnect someone if necessary to prevent, uh, undue interference with the meeting. Um, that decision is subject to appeal to the, to the body. Um, any member can appeal a decision to disconnect someone. Um, and, uh, let me move on here. Um, paragraph H speaks to the, the, the concept of the presiding officer or someone designated by the presiding officer being required to monitor the virtual feed and recognize members during the meeting. Um, I, I have had a meeting last night where this was discussed and, um, there was a recognition that the chair might want someone to monitor the, uh, online meeting to determine whether people are using the, you know, raise your hand function, uh, that the, uh, the presiding officer may not be able to see all of that and, and at the same time, you know, watch what's happening in the room. So the presiding officer will be responsible for doing that and may, may seek assistance from others in doing that. Um, paragraph I speaks to, uh, how you go about, uh, uh, seeking recognition, um, and interrupting, um, during a meeting. And the rule is drafted to, um, indicate that someone attending virtually uh, should use the raise hand function, uh, or equivalent option, uh, indic- indicating they would like to be recognized and should wait a reasonable time uh, to be recognized before interrupting by voice. Paragraph J, uh, set indicates that a member who intends to make a motion or to offer an amendment or propose some instructions to a committee, for example, shall before or after being recognized, post the motion in writing to the chat function, the file sharing function, or upload the document and notify the presiding officer so that people can see what is being proposed. I think this is something that is going to be new, uh, for the council. It's going to be more formal than what you're used to, and you may choose to even discuss that tonight. Is that, is that a process that you want to uh, require by rule? You want to require it now and see how it goes? Um, I think that a, as I, as I consider that particular rule, I, I, I sense that it might be challenging, and it's certainly a departure from past practice where people have been permitted to simply make, uh, motions, uh, verbally without being required to follow this kind of a process.
Um, is that one that you made up or did you find that at Robert's Rules Revised?
That is one, uh, so, uh, all of these rules, uh, many of these rules, uh, have their source in the recommendations of the latest edition of Robert's Rules, which includes an appendix that's dedicated specifically to the questions of how to conduct electronic meetings. Um, and that was in Robert's Rules. And again, um, it may be more, uh, formal than what the council would like to do here. So I wanted to make sure I highlight that. Um,
Matt, on that one?
Yeah.
Is, is that for people present or only for the people who are virtual? Because that's not clear.
That's a great point, because it's, it's not clear in the rule. And, um, I, I think the intent was that it would be for people attending virtually, but it is not clear and one, one might reasonably read it to require that on them. But I think the intent is that it, it's required of just members who are appearing virtually. Um, but you're right, not as clear as it could be on that point.
That, that to me, I'm sorry, that sounds like an undue burden to the people who are, a punishment to the people who are watching online. Why is it any different for the, anybody who's, uh, online versus someone who's sitting in a room?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, and, and I think it's worth, you know, discussing this particular requirement and deciding if you either want to take it out, leave it in, or leave it in with some adjustments to make it applicable to everyone, whether you're in person or virtual.
I'm going to remove.
Point, point of order. We're in a discussion phase on this already, and a motion hasn't been presented yet.
All right, so we'll go through it, then we'll make a motion, and then we'll do amendments. How's that sound?
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. I was about to say the same thing.
Okay, uh, moving on to item K. Uh, this, uh, requires that members announce themselves, uh, after, at the first opportunity after joining or before departing the meeting. Um, but says you shouldn't interrupt a speaker to do that. Um, item L, loss of meeting room connection, again, uh, well, this, um, this indicates that any business transacted well, the meeting room computer, that means the computer that, by which virtual attendance is, is allowed, uh, is disconnected, that would be considered, uh, invalid. So if, if there is something that happens technically that make, makes it impossible for all members who are attempting to participate virtually, makes it impossible for them to participate because the meeting room computer itself is disconnected or the inter-meeting, you know, internet, uh, from the internet meeting service, then um, the action would be void. Uh, you'd have to essentially adjourn the meeting, uh, if you couldn't regain service during a meeting. And that's a little different from what's discussed earlier in section F, where uh, there, there, there's a recognition that if an individual, a member who's attempting to appear virtually, if they, if they lose connection on their end, uh, but the internet service connection is still operating at the meeting room, the action would still be valid. But if, if the meeting room, uh, computer itself is disconnected from internet service, then we'd have to stop the meeting essentially. Um, and then finally, paragraph M indicates that the public, uh, may attend meetings virtually and may attend either by video or audio means, or they can simply appear by audio means. They don't have to do it by video means. So those are the rules. I, I, I guess my last thing is, um, as I recall, as I understand it, this, these rules were discussed by the C A C P committee. We spent quite a bit of time looking at these rules. Um, I wasn't there, but my colleague Rachel Snyder was there. That's all I have.
All right. Are there any questions?
Yep. I have a question, Matt. Um, how does this work for, when we go into closed session? Because, um, even though we, you know, people that are calling in, they might not have like a secure location. There might be family members present or work colleagues present or what have you. How would that work that we can ensure that um, information that's supposed to be kept confidential is, isn't inadvertently leaked to people who are not on council?
What a great question, and that's the first time that question's been asked, and, and I haven't even thought about that question myself. It is not addressed in these rules. Um, there is nothing in the rules today that requires, that says, for example, that if you're appearing virtually, uh, at a closed session meeting, that you must take steps to, um, do so from a private place, for example. So um, if that's something that the council believes, uh, should be, uh, specifically addressed in the rules, uh, will need to do that.
I would highly suggest that because you never know who's listening or where people are calling from, because that's not specified. And so they could be calling actually from a public place, so.
Yeah, I, I will, I guess the one thing I would add to that is, my understanding is that as, as we, I don't know if this has happened with the city council here in Stoughton. I certainly have, uh, attended closed sessions that were being held during virtual meetings where, you know, you can, you can take people who are members of the public and put them in a, in a waiting room, so they're not able to participate virtually in that closed session discussion. So I know there's a ta- technical capacity to do that. But this other question of how do we ensure that, um, members themselves are in a private location during closed session, not something that's come up until you just raised it. Uh, and I guess,
Oh, go ahead.
I, I, I guess the, the one thing I would say about that is, um, so I think there are a couple of things we could do on that. Um, uh, one possibility is to just go ahead and adopt the policy tonight, but request that the committee uh, or, you know, me, uh, work up a, an amendment to drill with that issue. So you can adopt everything else tonight, we can come back and amend the policy to address that issue. Uh, we can try and craft language tonight on the fly in an amendment, um, although I'm always a little nervous about doing that because it's complicated. Uh, or you could send the whole policy back to committee to say, work on that issue and bring it back.
Uh, my preference would be for us to add an amendment later. I wouldn't like, hate to delay this further, but I think it's an important aspect that we really need to, um, think about. And it do it correctly.
And I think, a- as I think about it, the rules should require not only that members, um, who are participating virtually, um, do so in, in a private place if we're in closed session, but also any city staff or consultants who are participating virtually in a closed session would also be required to do, follow those same guidelines.
Right, and then as you said, that, um, we would have the software, uh, capability of um, disconnecting or putting in a waiting room, any public or guest that is not part of that. So I think that all has to be addressed.
And on that point, let me ask Mayor Swadley if he knows his, my understanding is that Zoom does provide that capability. I don't know if anyone can confirm that, but that's my understanding.
It does. I, I've been put in the meeting room, but I haven't put anyone in it yet. And they've always let me out, though, so that's a good thing. So, yeah, let's have that capability. So are there any other questions or comments about any of the other ones? I think we, we understand we have to do some work on the closed session. Are there any of the other ones? And specifically, I think it was J. I think there was a couple of comments about that one.
Yeah, I think there was a suggestion that that simply be deleted from the policy, but, uh,
Okay. Are there any other ones? Otherwise, I'm going to circle back to Ben and see if he wants to make the motion. Oh, Alder Person, huh?
Um, I was just looking at, uh, item M. Um, I realize that the document here is designed to deal with the, uh, the virtual aspects. But I just thought it would be, uh, appropriate to add a, a line stating that the public could also attend in person, as in the past. Because it sounds like it could preclude on this.
Yeah, we did add that line to the agenda, so we can copy and paste that on there if you'd like.
Okay. Sounds good.
Any other ones?
Yep.
President Hirsch?
I have one more comment. I mean, on what item was it? Uh, the forced disconnection. I mean, I'm just thinking also with respect to the public. Um, I mean, not that, I mean, for freedom of speech and everything, you want to keep them there, but how do we? We haven't had, you know, we're, we might have some contentious situations coming up. How do we, um, make sure that people that are virtually attending don't inundate the chat box with kind of, uh, you know, opinions, misinformation, um, bullying aspects? Is there a way that we could, um, you know, politely, you know? I don't know. I mean, I'm just thinking about meetings in the past, you know, where some public, when we're in, actually in person, you know, get, um, upset or say things, and we have to say order or whatever, but how do you handle that if they're writing things in the chat box and, uh, and possibly discombobulating the council or, you know, inadvertently bullying people or trying to sway votes or something like that? How do you, how is that going to be handled?
Yeah, I just have a couple of observations on that. Um, and, and I'm not sure I, I have a perfect answer. Actually, I'm glad you raised that because a, another issue that, that, uh, came up at a meeting last night discussing these kinds of issues uh, addressed the question of what to do about members who are exchanging chats, including privately during a meeting, which, um, can raise some questions under the open meetings law. Um, and so one thing I think we ought to consider is whether it's possible to disable the chat function so that we just don't use it for two reasons. One, so that we don't have private conversations taking place uh, in, uh, the chat room among members that are not visible to the public. And two, to avoid the kinds of issues that, um, Alder Person Hirsch is suggesting could become a problem uh, during meetings. So I, I don't know if it's possible to disable the chat function, but if it is, um, and it seems to me that the chair would have the ability to, to do that. I don't know if we need to actually address that issue in the rules, or if it's something that we can simply give the chair or expect the chair to manage that in an appropriate way.
I think you can set it up to disable the chat. And, you know, it might even be in the default. Um, I'm not as familiar with Zoom, but I have been on Zoom calls where the chat has been disabled, and some of them have been public meetings.
If you do that, if you, if you get rid of the chat function, that's going to jeopardize your line J than motions in writing.
Which may be, which may be deleted in any event. We'll see.
Sure.
At any rate, I am going to, uh, move to approve this, and so we can have a motion on the, on the table to discuss.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Do you want to go right into the discussion, Ben, or do you want to accept, want me to accept amendments right away?
Um, I think that's up to you. Uh, we do have, I think, a pretty reasonable one from, uh, Alder Mieski.
All right. Did you want to make an amendment, Tom?
I do. I make amendment to remove item J from this ordinance.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that one? Here are none, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Fred.
Aye.
Any opposed? That most, that motion carries. Um, did I miss something?
Fred had a question before, before the vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Did you have a question, Fred?
No, I was just going to, uh, uh, I guess, say that I think the idea of the chat box beyond the point of writing up motions uh, is something that would need to be addressed before this should be approved. The, I think it would violate the open rules concept if people were chatting in private. So that, I was just going to add that. So I was just going to add that. I don't know if that would be part of J or not.
Could I weigh in briefly, Mayor?
Sure.
So if the council would like, going back to the earlier discussion about how to handle this, the council could refer to me the task of coming back with some revisions or or some amendments to the to the policy. And the ones that I have on my notes are as follows. One, developing guidelines for closed sessions. Another to clarify that the public may attend in person as well as virtually. And then finally, I think it would be appropriate to add a a policy that gives the that with respect to the chat box both gives the chair the authority to manage and disable the chat box and also prohibits private conversations using the chat function among members during meetings. And so if the council wanted to go ahead and adopt the policy tonight and direct me to come back with those amendments, we could do that.
And I guess Alder Person Legaki, go ahead.
I like what you're I like what you're saying, Attorney Dregney, and may you consider adding to your list K arrival and departure announcement. I think we missed another members attending virtually. I don't think that everyone who's showing up in person needs to announce their arrival or departure. I think that's meant for virtual members as well.
Let me just go back and what section are you looking at?
A. Adding the words members attending virtually shall announce themselves.
I don't see that. I don't see that in A. A as in apple?
K as in kielbasa.
Oh, I'm sorry, K. So we want to say members and the public shall announce themselves.
Members attending virtually is my suggestion.
Okay, I got you. Got you. Yep.
All right. And I think the idea here is if we pass this, at least it gets us to the point where we can begin in two weeks. If we don't want if we don't want to begin in two weeks or we don't want to pass it, we can do that. We'll just have to wait until we get into the August.
I just had a question about K, if I could, please. We're taking attendance, so I'm not sure how K is relevant or important. So if you could shed some light on that. I mean, we can see who's here, correct? I mean, I can I can look at the attendance and then we're taking attendance. I'm just not sure how that's meaningful.
It's a so I think the intent is to it speaks to announcing yourselves, you know, at the first opportunity after joining. And I think it says before departing. So if you're going to depart, you should announce that you're going to be departing. It is correct. You're correct that we take attendance. And it seems to me that the the taking of attendance could be the means by which members announce themselves under this rule. I don't know if it's really critically necessary, given, you know, and it may you know, it may not be ultimately. On the other hand, I do think it's useful to to have at least a process by which members announce themselves or let people know if they're leaving the meeting.
Yeah, and I would agree if someone needs to leave the meeting before it's finished, for whatever reason, I do think it would be important to let others know. I don't necessarily disagree with K. It just seems redundant announcing unless you are coming late.
Right. That's what I was thinking. Maybe it needs to be tweaked that you announce yourself if you missed roll call. But you also have to let people know if you're departing because that might affect whether or not we have a quorum.
Agreed.
I guess my sense is that we we could leave the language as it is and it would the requirement would be satisfied by simply responding, you know, that you're here during roll call. That would satisfy the requirement that you announce yourself. I I could modify to say announce themselves at during the roll call or at the first opportunity after joining, if you like. I can do that.
Well, or you could say during roll call or if they missed roll call. So if they join late and miss roll call, that would be important.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe just some word smithing I would be good with as well. Thank you.
I'll give that a shot if if this is adopted tonight and I'm asked to make some some of these cleanup. I will. I will try and add that as well.
All right. Are there any other concerns or amendments that anybody wants to make? Sure, I heard Alder Person Hunt and I heard somebody else. I'm not sure who it was.
It was me, Greg.
Okay. Oh, go ahead, Fred, and then Greg.
I think we have quite a number of items that could use some word smithing and refining. Would it require an additional motion or could I just say that I think as a recommendation, it would be better to have Attorney Dregney create the wording before we approve the document? Rather than approve the document and then try to create wording that is adequate.
I think the proper thing to do, Alder Hunt, is if you believe that's the correct procedure, you should offer a motion to refer this back to committee and see if that's what the council wants to do. If there's a second.
I would make that motion that we return it to the committee and allow the additional wording to be formatted before we vote to approve.
And is there a second? Okay, I heard a second and I know Alder Jensen, you were waiting.
Yeah, I just I was just going to ask if the council felt it would be necessary or appropriate to have somewhere in the body of this document a statement that something to the effect of all meetings shall be conducted in person wherever possible. Something along those lines to because this this as as we go through this, it becomes more and more obvious that these meetings will be very, very cumbersome. And I'm just becoming more and more uncomfortable with it rather than more at ease with it. So I mean, that's my perspective on it. So I just I was wondering if that would be something that we should look at. But with the with the amendment by or with the motion by Alder Hunt, I think that can be discussed at CACP.
All right. Did you have something, Matt?
Yeah, I would just say that if Alder Jensen's, I don't think it would be appropriate to say that all meetings should be conducted in person wherever possible. That would that would create a lot of questions about what that means. I think if Alder Jensen believes that meetings should be in person as a general rule, then you know, this policy that allows and authorizes virtual participation should not be adopted. And you should stick with the in-person requirement and consider creating opportunities under special circumstances that the council could authorize virtual participation, say on a case by case basis. If if that's what the council believes is appropriate. I don't, but I don't. I don't think it's workable to to create a policy that allows virtual participation, but then says, but really, should we have to meet in person if if it's possible?
That's the information I needed.
All right. Anybody else have anything on the motion? The motion is to send it back to the committee. And I just had one thing, Matt. Is this policy only for the city council or is it for all the councils, committees, commissions?
It is as currently drafted. It is. It applies to the common council and any city committee board or commission meeting. So it you really would have to be ready to facilitate virtual or hybrid meetings for all committees and commissions and boards.
Yeah, because my question is, is, you know, can we tell a commission how they conduct their business? Because they have their own statutory authorities.
That is a good question. And I I if you're concerned about, I think this is just giving the committees, for example, the planning commission the authority to do this, at least from the common council perspective. If you're asking me, could the planning commission say we're not going to authorize that? Honestly, I'm not. I don't think I can answer that tonight. I think that's a difficult question that I don't think I can answer tonight.
All right. That's something we want to look into because we do have some public notices that we need to get out here in the next couple of days. And we're trying to understand if they have to be virtual only or if they could be hybrid. It seems like right now, you know, or do they have to be either virtual or either in person? Right now, I think we're seeing there can't be a combination. Is that right?
Well, right now, we're we're still operating under kind of the emergency framework that was put in place during the beginning of the COVID outbreak. And and we're really trying to set the stage for transitioning back to post-COVID meetings. So I think there's no, I don't have any doubt that the council can establish the rules for itself and for standing committees. The question you raised about statutory commissions raises an interesting question that I can't answer. So it seems to me that it may be the planning commission and the police commission, for example, police and fire commission could make their own determination about how they would want to handle this issue.
Yeah, I didn't even think about that till last night at the planning commission.
Yeah, I mean, this is this is requiring us to to answer questions that we haven't never had to answer before.
All right. Any other? I think, Fred, do you have your hand up?
No.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion to send it back to committee? All right. Here are none. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed?
No.
One opposed. So it looks like that will go back to the committee and then either Matt or Rachel will probably try to attend that meeting.
Yep.
And that meeting will be in August, whatever the first Tuesday is in August.
Yes, so that'll be that'll likely be Rachel Snyder. I'll talk to her. I'll brief her on the meeting tonight, what the issues were that were raised so that she's prepared to help the committee.
All right. Thank you. Great discussion. Let's get on to the next one. And that is ordinance seventeen. And that one is a first reading coming from Public Works, Alder Person Maskey.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is ordinance seventeen of 2021, Resolution to Dissolve the Cemetery Board and Shift All Cemetery Oversight Responsibilities per State Statute 157.50, parent two to the Public Works Committee. And Public Works recommends at seven to zero on July 6th. And this is a first reading.
All right. Any questions on this one? Or do you want to explain the rationale, Alder Person Maskey?
It's pretty simple. Cemetery Board meets once a year and their business is very sparse to so they do not feel that they are, it is a necessary committee and Public Works has agreed with them and is willing to take over the responsibilities.
All right. It looks like Director Abir is on here. So as long as you hear, Brad, you want to say your piece?
Yeah, I'll just add that I did reach out to every single current board member to get their feelings on making this transition. And they were all on board with doing so. As Alder Maskey mentioned, we meet once a year. The business that we hold is really more operational. That probably belongs more in the Public Works Committee. So we feel like this is a natural fit that fits within the state statute. And we made some some further changes to the the city ordinance to do so. So any questions? We're happy to answer that this time or at the next meeting.
All right. Sure. Go ahead, Alder Kristen Jensen.
Yeah, I was just wondering who initiated this, if it was initiated by Public Works or by the cemetery board.
It was initiated by myself and talking with some board members to make it a little more like I said before, we met once a year and sometimes it's like pulling teeth to get people to come. So we thought that this again was a natural fit to move to the Public Works Committee.
Yeah, I sat on that committee one for, I think, one year. And yeah, I think it's a good move.
All right. Anybody else at this time? If not, if you have any questions between now and the next meeting, feel free to reach out to Director Abir. We'll go on to the next item then. And that would be ordinance eighteen. And that one is a first reading from CACP.
So this is sorry, ordinance, chapter two, article two, division two. Just adding a few sentences, expanding our rules for the citizen members of the standing committees that we added earlier this year.
All right. Well, it's a first reading.
All right, right, right.
Yeah. And I think this was the language that Alder Person Jensen, is this what you came up with?
That's that's correct. Yeah. Just wanted to clarify some of the questions that were brought up by myself and others. And I think it just solidifies what what we were trying to do.
Okay. So unless there's any questions, this one will come back in two weeks. Alder Person Hunt? You got it. I think you're muted, Fred. There we go.
I'm unmuted. Thank you very much. The citizen members shall count in determining a quorum. Can a quorum be formed with only citizen members?
No, because there's only two and we need four out of six.
Okay.
So you'd have to have two citizen members and two council members.
Got you. That's fine.
The mayor doesn't count toward the quorum.
He should.
I get to vote, though, at the committee. All right. Any other questions? Alder Person Legaki.
I have to raise my hand function manually on my vote to meeting. Just want you to know that. I, in time, I don't think at this time, but when and if this gets revisited, I think that we should explore. Would we ever want citizen members to possibly hold a vice chair? I think there could be some wisdom in that, but I also see some downfalls and I'm just planting a seed.
All right. Any other questions or thoughts? Here are none. This one will be back at the next meeting. Last item is resolution 103 of 2021. This one here. Well, this is one that Attorney Dregney has been working on with Planning Director Shields. So I don't know if anybody in specific wants to introduce it. Do you want to give us a quick overview, Matt?
Yeah. So the developer of Kettle Park West is working on a replat of a plat called The Meadows at Kettle Park West. That's requiring reconfiguration of some of the lots and including reconfiguring some of the public right of way. And because this public right of way is, you know, dedicated public right of way, there's a specific legal process that has to be used to discontinue public right of way. The developer has submitted a petition requesting that the city discontinue. The developer has submitted a petition requesting that the city discontinue that piece of right of way. What your council is being asked to do tonight is not to actually vote on discontinuing the right of way, but only to introduce the resolution that calls for discontinuing the right of way, and then, uh, calling for a public hearing on this to be held at least forty days after tonight. So all you need to do tonight is, um, introduce the resolution, you're not voting on it.
All right, and so this, this is one where we're trying to figure out how to how to notice it, whether it should be in person or virtual or both.
For the public hearing?
Yes.
Question?
Uh, sure, Alder Person Maskey.
You know, some of us are familiar with this, some of us are not. Those who are not, it's kind of hard for them to vote on something that there is not much information on. There's no background visuals for maps and or anything besides this resolution. This, just saying, uh, have to vote on something you don't really understand.
Yeah, and again, you're not being asked to vote on the resolution tonight.
I understand that, I understand that, what I'm saying is, is that to get to even that, the point that you're asking, you have to know what you're what you're what they're asking for.
I can share my screen, Mayor, and show the eyebrow cul-de-sac that was of the area you'd like.
I'm just saying, it should have been in the packet.
No question, agreed.
All right, yeah, I'll share the screen, I was looking for it myself as as Tom spoke. Sorry, sorry, it was in the packet, it got missed with transition that's going on in in one of the positions in City Hall, so, um, we'll certainly, uh, you know, work on that, and I'll get the screen to Rodney, and he can walk us through it.
In the northwest corner of The Meadows addition to Kettle Park West is this eyebrow cul-de-sac circle that we've actually discussed about the odd configuration during the plating process at the outset, that that's the area that's being requested to be vacated or discontinued as part of this resolution. I'll give you another another larger screenshot to give you a better idea where it is overall. So it's in the upper left-hand corner of the screen or the western edge of the Kettle Park West Meadows Edition, this area.
Rodney, what are they going to replace that with?
So there's a number of parcels around that. Yeah, actually, it's going to be reconfiguring the parcel layouts, so that there'll be there'll be actually a few more lots added, if you will, but the configuration of lots will change and a lot lines will be readjusted through the replating process that Matt mentioned.
And though the the current schedule that we anticipate is set up so that you will have the plat and and see that proposed new plat or before before you have to vote on this resolution.
That's correct.
Right, and then when you announce it to the public, they're going to have all this information for that public hearing?
It'll point them to the location where the materials will be, if that's correct.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions on this one? All right, so that's all we had to do is introduce it, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
No worries, um, a quick clarification from my unique brain, so Castle Circle goes away and all of the new plating would be in orientation to Telemark Trail?
Yeah, the Telemark Trail right of way will remain the same, the lot lots will be reconfigured on either side of Telemark Trail, and I think there's some lot line adjustments adjacent to Jackson Street as well as proposed in the replat, but as as it pertains to this discontinuance area, these lot lines will be adjusted so that they all have frontage on Telemark Trail.
The action tonight, Mayor, I would like to, I think it would be useful if the record reflects a motion to introduce the resolution, if there could be a motion voted on to simply introduce the resolution, then we can show that we've satisfied that step in the legal process.
Okay, are there any other questions before I ask for that motion? All right, here are none, so I will ask for that motion, is anybody wanting to make it?
Don't move.
Hi.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any discussion?
I was just wondering, we, what portion of the public right of way would be sacrificed because of this? Was that not part of the the need, was that we were giving up some right of way?
It's the it's the Castle Circle right of way that was crosshatched on the screen I had up, I'm sorry, I just disconnected my screen.
You mean, was that the little center of the roundabout or the center of the cul-de-sac?
It's actually the street that surrounded the cul-de-sac ball, yes.
Oh, okay, all right.
Any other questions? Here are none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? All right, that motion does carry, that's all we have for tonight.
Motion due adjourned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Not opposed, that motion carries, thank you, have a good night.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.